Welcome everyone, tonight's meeting starting on council, we go council meeting here at Glenview. Just a bit of housekeeping before we go through on agenda. Can I ask everybody to switch off on the silent mobile phones please? There's no plan, fire drills. If this fire alarms do go off, it's called emergency.
What direction you?
Tonight's meeting is being recorded and probably on YouTube. Right, we'll move on to the agenda apologies for absence. Chair apologies for all the deepering, Mayor Tronso, the Prime Jaws, Carmen Arshel, Eugenette Stinson's request for dispensation for two or three months. I've been on the way. And I've got the call as well. Any apologies again? So any apologies for anyone else now? I believe we have had to take a vote on dispensation, so everybody happy? Eugenette?
Yeah.
Yeah. Item three declarations of interest. Is there any one more declarations of interest?
No.
Item four laser managements. Since the last meeting, I haven't attended any functions or anything. I do apologize, I was doing well when it was on course estate and I put my hands up. And above you, where I think they like you. This time. I'll turn on the settings. So we'll move on to item five, which is the richest state. Eugenette is, she has just come out of hospital, have to have an operation. Is she?
No.
Mr Deputy Dean, want to say anything?
Just a thank you for the sake of the recent events that we've been taking in. We just think it's gone well, I'm sure that we could.
And moving on to item six. Update from that, which I'm glad to do, I'm glad to be able to come to the board days, a couple of apologies. Item nine, in the bank reconciliation, but we also completed time to send out the papers due to the soft coverage. Which has not been rectified. And the bank break has been big as of today. Because of the forest to be out of the main table. So that will be allowed on the next meeting. And also apologies for events update. So we're not sure whether anybody received them or not. You know, we think it's to do, to do three six five, the. I tell you somewhere they look at it. So we shall receive it. That was going to be recalled, that followed. And the list has been hasn't received it. So what we'll do is for the events update, we'll send out tomorrow's, we'll be waiting to see. And what's in the report? And if you can bring anything, live up questions to the next meeting. Or because the next meeting is not just September, we said, if you've got any questions in the meantime, just that's more. And just to update on the website, that's no longer on. Still fairly basic at the moment. To sort of still continue the work on the forward review content. And again, as of when you visit the website, you see anything. That's obviously all the same of these are taken on process. Move on to item seven, public participation. Is there any, does the public got any questions or have received them? Or the same normal questions or questions from the public?
Okay, John Stockton, back here, nothing. I've just looked at the agenda that you just handed out and I wasn't actually going on the website, but actually. Mentioned you could have looked at all the town councils on Clark. And I did have a question on that, because it did actually say that first. And I saw that he changed it from town clerk to chief executive or chief officer. And also it looks like an increased salary. But what I haven't seen is I didn't reach it. I haven't seen anything where it's come through and called cancel. And I always thought, if you're making that change, it's not, it's not like, you know, prior to your pressing public, but you're changing a job description. And also if you're making further that statement, so I missed it some way. So that was the first one. And the second one was about the civic hall. And the savings that he's made, because you basically put the council tax up. And I was just wondering why the savings from the civic hall, because it's all 20,000. A couple hundred thousand. My last question to public, you're like standard child, more than you back to the year long, which I was wondering, you know, why did you have to do that? And the other thing I was wondering about was the civic hall, because I haven't seen anything. Where, when you had to release back in, you know, you wouldn't have to, it wouldn't have to go back to the standard that you got in. So about five years, I was just wondering if you'd actually have that allowance back, because it seems a long time since you had the releasing. So if that's the last day.
I'm just going to ask some of the questions that were raised first, then we'll go to the planning, then we'll go to the. So the civic hall, Chief Office Hall, that was an agreement with the HR maybe, who would be the delegate economy. To progress the town car position. And so the HR maybe that would agree to change the title. Really to try to attract more people to the hall. Because sometimes when the advertiser ten car feedback was that, it was like a clerk administration type role. So obviously we need somebody who's a bit more strategic. So that was the reason we can change an title, change the salary. Say I was really bad, HR could be too happy if a delegate authority was created as council. Sorry, I've got no options. I've got any expenditure, anything in the column that was relevant about the bank for council. It's like a little example of that. It was within the budget that the council has agreed to take a workshop when we set the budget. So we have a workshop where all councillors attend and agree with the budget and where the budget's going to be spent. So that cost for the chief officer is actually within that budget, it hasn't increased the budget. So if it was going to increase the budget, it would have to go back to all council. So come on.
My apologies, I probably didn't stop at the top six, my apologies about missed any explanation. It's simply that I've heard a group that played the cards, would be cut back things, or something actually, only once certainly, I was. Can't just ask, it's actually simply a movement. And if it isn't, what's the last number behind this?
I'm curious about what we'll do, this will address that, that I can see on the events update. That's okay. Do you want to finish off?
Yes.
Drinking it. I just thought I'd assist, yes. So the second point was civic hall and the savings. Why would have the basis preset, so preset was increased. And it was purely down to the allowances, cost of the allowances. And the reduction in the lower of another round that we used to get, every person we use. So that was the reason for the increase. So we didn't increase the preset, we've got many of our. Kind of cost of living increases, the services and supplies, our salaries. Purely down to taking on the allowances and the loss of grant. So you did make, I see this wrong, I was involved. We did raise the savings obviously. Obviously some of those savings were. Set against some of the costs of moving out. And some of that savings has gone into reserves. We've got both reserves and got second, which are committed, that is the chunk that is committed to pay for the dilatation of the civic hall. So that amount hasn't been agreed yet with the government council. So some of that savings will go towards those costs. I'm really agreeing to find out the price. Thank you, so it's all in hand. Thank you for that. Anyone else have any questions?
So will the council on our open protest against that? This is probably the one of the plan application. I want to know, is there any plans, what is within standing? And what if there are, what would be actually in place for that knowledge? The council, obviously, it's called, the obviously this protest against the burn or whatever. It's the particular area of concern myself.
And that's Chris, that will be covered in our applications in the night and day. Any more questions we've gone on? Move on to item eight, confirmation of the limits. The last. It's attachment being. Could I have some order in the second please? You want to have some?
One second.
Thank you. I'm just concerned, so you just. Item nine, so already explained that the. Agents in the bank reconciliation stopped being ready until the next meeting. So we move on to item ten, which is the plan permission. And I don't think it's been, like, plan permission has actually come through ever since the last meeting. They perhaps it's been very little, but we saw the thought. And. Do you want me to give us an answer? We have had an email to say that they will be meeting this Friday. In here. And. For about the solar farm. And for the public, it's two thirty till seven PM here. And it's to the one to prepare planning, so they haven't prepared the plan, the one to consult with the public first. So that is in here, like I say, this Friday. At between two, two thirty, seven o'clock, if it's a drop in, so people can come, have a see. If people use it. So I'm also good. And next item is number eleven, update from County Councils. And one do you want?
The missing, the missing loss, obviously. And I'm not, this didn't form by the council, but obviously the council are very interested in the bank, the bank results. And so I spoke to John Rees yesterday. And they have six year currently open, they will have a hundred five there in the beginning. It was called cash access UK. It is a non-profit company, they will bank from nine o'clock to five o'clock, monitor jobs on this Friday. And they will have England Bank in Hope, an interview, sorry, an interview room. So that's say on Monday, create a deposit, you can take cash out, they'll give you change, they'll do all things that you're doing in that. But they have a limited room, they say, oh, I'm just going to say on Monday, it's going to be lock, it's on a Tuesday, it's going to be Lloyd's. I'm not going this way on a Wednesday, Sunday, do you know what I mean? So I think the Fridays will come by, and by what you're talking about this. So then somebody will be here to say, you have to speak to them all, if they have an issue, or put money in, treat them, get changed. So that's in stand, that's in stand. As soon as you know the premises is going to be on, he says, have to share that once they expand them. As soon as you know that, give that to them, to them, and then. And he's, he's having to contact with. We've done a couple of events, but he said, bring some stuff, we're starting to have a conversation with the public, just to inform. The cash access UK is actually owned by the post office. But it's not the post office, it's a, it's a not-for-profit part of. So it all sounded really very good, which was cool. The only other thing I have to say is. And obviously, most people will know us, but normally saw the cultural societies since the war. We are having an event, Beemish this year, it's not going to be in standing. It's going to be in Beemish Museum. It's going to be a very large event, compared to years gone by. And. Beemish have been very good to them, and it's taken them a long time to get to this point, but. And lots of friends going to help to organize this result. And they, Beemish are very keen to keep them for a long period of time, in years' time. And there are lots of keynote speakers coming on. And they're expecting five thousand people. Which is a big influence in terms to the museum. And some people will stay, as they always did stay, so the hotels will be booked out for this weekend. So I think it'll be a really, you know, a really good weekend. And I know, I know some people have helped to fund. Some people, some people have helped to fund all of it to fully. I think it'd be part of the state, it'd be worth having, you know, going down. And although the lack, they listened a lot, but we're kind of in the second term now. Not back to September.
And I was just gonna, obviously it seems to be our reset of that, a couple of things that. Were happening at the last council meeting, one of the big things that got agreed was the county's new goal strategy. Which was a big, important one. Which looked again extending the period before people actually knew what was where they can get help, what to stop you from ending up on the streets, things like that. And also wanted to look at. The family of the shelter for people who are not sleeping twenty-four hours, you know, because you don't have. Have a full-time shelter at the minute, there is a volunteer, one was around here at the weather, but it's not always available. And another thing which people have been listening was the counties. Council House building strategy was knocked back and is going back for review. Mainly over concerns related to the fact that there was a lack of mention of what to do with the generalizing strategy, which is a big one, and also. Disagreements about whether, whether the council should look to build. I think it was five new homes or was it five hundred, like a mix of homes?
The problem was, the problem was that it's true, they discussed five hundred new builds and a hundred and thirty-six or sixty-three. Purchased properties now, what they're saying was five hundred. And they didn't then quantify five hundred, so it might have been hundred and sixty-three. Purchased, but then less new builds.
There was, there wasn't clarity.
There wasn't enough clarity.
But I think it's, it's an important thing to note, especially with some of the things that came out. In the county's beach and the government's plans to build new homes, that the county is actually looking at what it can do to kickstart that process. And part of it is why it got knocked back, just like what's right for county to do in the area.
The numbers was good, the numbers were right.
The numbers were right, and quite frankly, we need to make sure that we get this right, it's not just about building homes, it's about building the homes that we need to cover.
Thank you. We'll move on to item twelve, registered interests members' home addresses.
So thanks for the support. And so. I'm already saying a lot, we're actually need to be on the registered investors. So Calis and I tended to see that following this week, I felt last week, sorry. And they have asked us to complete simple questionnaire from our council's point of view, as to whether. We want to really to remove members' home addresses unless the individual decides to opt in. Or the existing arrangements where members' home addresses published. And then if there is any sensitivity around that particular address, and you really have a request to have it removed. Or whether we want to stay, so a bit of that, over time, but it's come about because a lot of councillors. Start getting more vulnerable, intimidating with the pressure from the municipal public. You know, should this council sit in this room now, who might be faced with that? So that's kind of where it's come from. From a legal point of view, I understand that there's been more legislation to say we can change it. So from the legal, it could be legally challenged if we're adding the group addresses. A couple of the principles of these around the company have already moved to do, to do that already. Because they took stance that the risk of legal option would be very, very minimum. And so really it was to get consensus around the room, it was to. What should they do? Half a hundred million, half, you say, maybe, maybe, there's a difference. People know where I live, they know where I live, so when we leave it all to say, oh, people know where I live.
Welcome to the web page, the web page is all going to take you now, anyway.
John County Council Hall.
Oh, my, that was a.
Well, John County Council, we sent us to John County. So we have to.
Every channeling works, and so you can do it all.
So you were students, what, yeah, what about that? I think a good rule has. And that's, so to me, it's not a problem, but I can say a problem with. In my pressure groups and people who are not from your immediate area, who don't know university. With that kind of information being, it could be a sort of chaos, or you know, just. So I mean, I'm going to go the bottom, what is it, if the general consensus is taken off, I can quite understand why. The front of some suggestions, council is checking, and I don't think a lot of people are quite concerned, if it is not from our party posts. It's not like that, and I thought almost a whole lot of that.
I'm trying to teach you how to go your way, because I mean, that was a kind of way, I'm going to go against it, but maybe because of.
It's hard to work, because it's a different to me, because we're just a guy, but I think with the council, the optimum, which got me the best for everybody actually.
So have we had a vote, do you mean? Those people who agree to remove the members' home addresses unless the individual member decides to opt in. That's the one, that everybody wants to power with, it's all that, yes. So you come off, unless you want to. So we'll take that back to, say, John, who like, who's around back, they back and they're chasing some question. And the next item on the agenda is item thirteen, political balance.
So the political balance is, from the agenda, and following the voting missions for our Labour councillors. Who design from the Labour group. And I want to put it on the agenda to understand what we're doing, what I would mean by political balance. So obviously we would agree with the AGM, really split the page. And so I just want to get everybody's thoughts on that. I have made some fires with Seadog. Around this data, I have not a response yet. So at the moment, we've now got nine political of the order. And we've got four rejections, German side independence, and I kind of really like to understand. I can all documentational websites, says German side independence, I really need to understand, like, does it political group or not? Also, it's. So really, yeah, I'm just kind of impressed with the.
No, because you have, if you, if you're a political group, then you have to alert the town clerk to see. I'm a political group, so if you're my own, I'm not going to leave it group, I'm not seeing anything to say. German side. Well, it's supposed to be an engagement, but a little. So on the website, we do, we are interested in having association through the German mission. So on, and all these are. So I have to. Obviously, obviously, the world is. So on the, on the BCC's website, it's got party, it's German side independence, the political group, the German group. You know, playing on it.
That's, that's.
We are German side independence, so you have a park, and we've got an association, so. So in town hall, we sit, we still, I've got German side independence, we sit in the German group, right? Okay, and we think, so we are now independent people from the justice, from the director of, and that forms the German group. So for our purposes, then our political balance is now nine for Labour, five for. Obviously, the group who have left can be five independents, if they treat to be five independents. Or they can form an independent group, five, three or more inclusive, yes. So that's their decision, that's all we do, that's nothing to do with any vote, that's, that's their decision.
So ultimately, obviously we're just trying to understand that, you know, want everyone to be clear. You're going to have, there's going to be nine Labour, there's six German side independents. And the rest, to be fair, at the minute, it's made up of, I give me randoms. So that, so you've still got two political groups, and then there's. So we work out the political balance now that.
It's very unfair that five collective people do not have a. As an individual, we weren't necessarily having a seat at the table. But there's a couple of people that have. And I think what would be wrong was not to give the five people a table. So how do you get a seat?
We have a remission.
They're concerned. On the ballot papers.
We have all the papers, Julian, all the provisions.
They're first, and on the ballot paper, you have your own group, and what Labour have, so therefore, they're independent, we have independent.
So.
I was just going to like pick up on what you said, obviously, and we all. We are, the military's independent people, we're not part of that group, and I know at the county level that makes a difference. Uh, and for myself, I could say on all committees, if we weren't part of it, you know, mess with the political balance.
It, it, it absolutely does, you know, and I, and I say, yeah, they're not in a group, therefore don't necessarily, yeah, or allow them to. Well, I'll ask some questions, see, I'll just to check the auditions, I think I've arranged the, um, what's going on, which is, that's. The, the legislation, because it does say in the legislation, um. Sometimes it's a difference in training, to take a secret.
I, I wouldn't just, just come back, it doesn't make a difference to me whether I say it as an independent or as. Part of an independent group, but if it's going to make it easier for committees and. Taking people that are quite happy to join a group or create it, because. If that makes it easier, I just don't know what the, what the rules are around it, whether.
You can be part of the independent group of people. That doesn't have local labels. Um. And, and after, you know.
I'm just asking, like, what's the process? What do I need to do to say, I don't know.
And it's the community, but it's a shot, a shot.
I know that, yes, the, the process is put in.
And so generally, you know, decide to be a meeting. A real full, a real independent group.
So we can make a part of the term of independence.
No, 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 we're not that way. So we're going to, we're getting the heads.
Well, since it's made us a real part, people who wasn't. Who wouldn't be nice to us, that's why.
That would be a thing, because the political balance of committees, which we're trying to use, if you could be excluded. Now, I think what's important. And I have to ask the fact that we exclude them, it's absolutely shocking, absolutely shocking, you can believe it. And I just think that if we did, the committees, all committees, are what they used to just about. Inaction, because we won't be without, without, without the group. Well, yeah, because we're, yeah, yeah, exactly. So we, we end up in a situation, yeah, because it's a control. But that's standard financialism, you know, you know, that's your decisions to make, not at this table. So if, if we can make it for you to have a big, um, uh, when it's good, well, that, that looks. Of course, political, you know, and then we're bringing up that and such, and that, and that's just. The reason, the reason we took the office, they were inside independence, maybe so, I'm enjoying it. So what is?
I'll withstand the, and by the time that's done, I don't know.
Just, so, it doesn't look right, it doesn't sit right. You know, the choice is yours, the political choice is yours to do what you will, and you're it. It's not amazing times in politics, because you can actually decide what you want to do. And you're not looking back at anybody telling you. Which is an amazing thing in politics.
Great, just through the chat, it's okay. Um, I'll cheat that if I'm not here, but it can't leave the council and, or. Um, it's, it's spoken about, we did. Agreed to continue as we are with the people on, if, if that's what wants. The, the council wishes to, because I know I can't. If I have a, I'll tell you about, I don't want to, so if I know I'm going to have to put a committee on, also I need.
Yeah.
I need some continuity of business to, to, to continue. I don't know, that's. Actually, well, discuss that, I think it's, do you think we should continue as?
Hmm.
With the, the, the groups that may not.
John, John, sorry, sorry. No, no, of course, um, I think, I think the decision is there, it's, it's, it's today. Um, and obviously you don't have a lot, you know, you've got no people to speak to, but that decision could be made quite easily. Or quite simply over the next couple of days.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not to make us even a hard position, it's just a case of. There are other people we need to ask.
Something, we, we don't want to pressurize that, I think, I think you go, you make that decision, you're going down, you're saying, this is what's going to happen.
But I, I don't think that should make much of a difference at this point in the committee, because. I mean, it's going to take a couple of days.
I don't think we sound, you know, plenty of time to. To resolve, because it's, it's, it's. And if we need to readdress. Uh, it stands for, they're going to be speaking out there.
This isn't the kettle.
Well, I, I'm a bit important, yeah. That's a big concept, I'm actually, I am important, so. It's fine for me, um, the, 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 sometimes I keep saying. No, I was just, you should, you should. That's, that's, that's. Over, 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 obviously, we've got, we've got, we may have, you know, the committees. Right, moving on to the agenda, we'll move on to item fourteen now, let's try and all the services and all the gems.
Okay, and Chair, can I take a call on fifteen together? My, 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 down the bottom. Um. So, as you did, we've, I've, I've expressed just over the last. Three or four weeks, I'm trying to give a little upgrade where we're at. Um, environmental services, um, what's happened, Northumberland, it's come out on Friday. Uh, it went. I think it went really, really, really well. Obviously, last year we got gold. Um, this year I'd love us to get gold investing class. We do, machines get me down the front street, um. It's been a, it's been a really hard effort, but the amount of partners that we've engaged, um, really has made a difference, like this. Forty-one, forty-two, I was, but don't, over on that, I have no statistics in front of me. Um. Sorry, forty-four, I just screamed, so, so, yeah, so. Um, we've got Blue Good Fund coming up, we have plenty of entries for that. Um, I'm in the process of sorting out coaching in day. Um, and obviously, yeah, this time of year is a very busy time, the lads, I'm. I'm, I'm, I'm saying, right on that, that every single day, so, um. In terms of environmental services, it's going really well. Uh, allotments, that's, um. Interesting at the minute, um. I've been, over the last couple of months, been, um, really trying to get a hold of the position we're in at the town council on how we move forward with the allotments, I think everyone's aware of it. Our allotment portfolio is. Huge, um, we've got Paris twenty-one, we're also in Cowal Dog. Um, it's. Uh, quite easily fifty percent, um, of all the lotments, and in County Europe, based in the Stanley area. I, I look at best practices, I've, I've learned that, um, the way we move forward as an authority, I've looked at the way we. Um, work our policy intensity in the future to make sure that everyone's happy, not just council, but the people on the. Um, on the allotment lots, over that, we need association or type through direct. Um, I'm trying to get a handle on all the land at the minute. Legally, the sites are not. Standing town councils, but they were going through the red line before in the process, we see that. Um, but we're working together, we're going to have to council, because they are, I'm going to trust us, so we have to work partnership until some, then it's. That, um, the asset transfer, but we're across, so we're, we're working together and I'm. I'm having a massive say in how we're going to come to council to do stuff, because there's no point in them. You put any new procedures and all sorts, if I'm going to change it, it's out of line. When I say I'm going to change it, that doesn't just mean me, I'm doing that through consultation, I'll be heading out and speaking to all the different. Um. Groups out there that are involved in the allotments, and I'm really interested to find out what they, they say. Um, I've had a drone up and looked at one of the different allotment sites, and that is a real eye opener, um. You know, um, basically. The bottom line is, is Stanley had a lot of allotments over the years. And I'm not saying we reduce them, but what I am saying is. There's almost too much provision of allotments for Stanley. Um, and that makes it hard, people think, oh, well. If you haven't got a waiting, um, a waiting list, that's, that's great, that's not the case. You want to have a bit of a waiting list, because some people were taking an allotment, it sits across down the line, they're like, they don't want to allot. And therefore then there's a space available, so there's, I'm looking at so many different things involved with allotments, I will be calling. Uh, allotment committee, um, hopefully over the next four or five weeks, um, pulling together a quick report, that's going to help me. What my recommendation are, we will always. Um, like I said, I'm not just jumping in and saying we definitely have to do it like this, it's about understanding. Exactly how it needs to be and what will be the best practice, not just for us, but the community as well. Um, so, yeah, I, I'll be there when I log my detail, but be prepared, those are, I mean, a lot like, maybe you are, it's all three hour, you may need. Okay, um, it's, it's hard, there's a lot to understand, a lot to say. So that's where we are, the, um, the lotments, of course, if anyone does want to come and speak with me. Um, because there is a lot of allotments out there, on people's doorstep, German questions, I'm seeing them. And like showing whatever I can in detail, but I can promise you I've sat on my laurels. I had huge amounts of information I'm trying to process through it. Yeah, questions?
Any questions? Can we talk just a little about this?
There are about twenty of them, there's tomorrow, but I don't want to get about half of them.
Next thing on the agenda was the events. What we did, but one. So obviously, as I explained earlier, we've been there, it's okay, it's better, that was. And then to the way, um, obviously, the bridge on Friday, and Microsoft, um, everything is not to the bottom. Um, Alex, did you want, were you able to answer? The number of people's question in relation to the event, that was very deeply, that's why we're in the main. And for council, there's.
Yeah, so we're not doing play in the park, we've changed it to a free activity week, it's going to be in a sole location at North Durham. It's the twelfth until the sixteenth of August. The reason that we've got it in a sole location is in previous play in the park ones, we've had antisocial behaviour. We want to reduce that. With having it in a sole location, the area that we've got fenced, so we can control who comes in, who comes out. Rather than loads of people coming in in different locations. It's also having it in that location, it's more effective in terms of costs, because we're not moving stuff around to different places. That's the main reason why it's going to be.
Is that a lot of things are stringing?
Well, yes, but it's the concern about people having to get. They will find their balance now, and then whether they're in your patients. So I've learned it's, you know, easier to, the. The big equipment that you've got there, as we've been transferred, and it's not easy for people in villages to get there, and that's. My concern, and it, it can't be worse timing now. The people, that they need things to do in their own times, you know, and. Starting council, starting council is not going to do it, who is? So it's just a concern of people's access. And I mean, hopefully, we need improvement on what's been in local areas, is that right now?
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah.
But still, it seems they've taken away from localities, though maybe a bit, for some people. Can I just say, frankly? And I don't know if you're aware, but most, um, areas, like every community centre and stuff, they do have been three projects on, which are all. On site in Aberbarnier. And they are more accessible and they are, they're more hard. For families, so the child will be on the same venue. And then they'll often, they'll, they'll stay on site for activities. And I was, that one, you know, one of my travel costs, you know, one of my, the one place from another. And some of them are, there's, like, every day, everything. So now, I think it's going on in every village that I know, probably, I think. You know, something like that, yeah. So.
And just another thing as well, is like, I was just about to say about, um. It may make it a bit hard for people who live in the villages, but obviously at the minute we do have. Um, the reduction in bus, well, it's too powerful, I've got one power for a child now, and a lot of things, especially over last year. Um, where. Well, I went to a couple of different events and saw a lot of the same people, and a lot of people, like, was going to more than one, or. Complaining that the same event was essentially replicated throughout the villages, and they didn't provide. Um, enough bearings, so I get, I get what you're saying, and it might make it a bit harder for some people. To get there, but there were, was, you know. The case where lots of the same families, people were at the event, and other families weren't intended at all. So hopefully a week of activities or, and we did that more, just with a lot of different people. I mean, sorry, can I, because now, obviously, whenever we do these events, we do carry out survey at the events, and we ask people, and obviously. We did that at the last event, we took up, when we were doing the assessment, we took on board, and people were telling us. Um, what the problems were, and what the problems were, you know, specific questions we asked. Um, so then that would be taken into the, I mean, your working group, that looks pretty clear. But again, it's one of those ones that, we're still putting on. Just as much stuff, but in one place, and I think it's about. Let's see how it, how it is, it may be. Ten times more successful. If it isn't, then we need to bring it back to the drawing table and, and make it right, because I agree with you. It's hard times at the minute, we need to understand what the, what the need of the public is, but we also actually listen to what the public want as well. So, it was a good question to ask that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, uh, in terms of social behaviour, I know there's been a lot of social behaviour, co-governors and fiscus, and. What have actually been turned?
There was instances of children, like beach water removed themselves from the area when we've done a, when we had the play in the parks. I don't have the exact reports, because I don't know how far they went, because we weren't organising it at that time.
Anything to that?
I'm sorry, it's, I come in, it's quite often. They're programming the, the rules that are causing the problems. Well, actually, nobody saw a different location, so. So we do have to take this into consideration, we have to think about health and safety of everyone, how we would manage the situation.
Let's do.
And, um. I'm with David on this, can we say to you all back at the next company on the antisocial behaviour, and which event? How many people will go, what, any? Prosecutions, anything like that, we should, you know, we should have some of the same.
I think, uh, I think that we have to get in touch with, um, whose name I can't remember. Yeah, I'll look, uh, to get the stats from him. Because we, it was.
He was, he was the said back from the council.
At that time, um, they were, they were, so he, he.
We're, we're, we call it just ward, we think that ward, I'm saying, for graduation and reports.
The police probably have reports as well, but the police were, they had, there was somebody in. Yeah, they were. I mean, that, that's why you have a working group, because the working group actually look at the problems, try and design out problems.
So we'll move on, next item is the date, time and venue for the next meeting. Which will be Tuesday, the twenty fourth of September, six thirty in Craighead, with a tour. Uh. And I ask for the public. And social representatives of the press and all past media to be excluded from part of the. And I can tell you, Goldie, your whole report has been dropped, but they're here, and we naturally.